Coming on this blistery, wintry day, it seems like winter has not left us yet. So at least at this time, we're going to do, let's see, pledge to the flag. And Rory Flanagan, if you want to lead us off to it, I would greatly appreciate it. And it's right there to the side.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Johnson, here. Strickus, Shaw, here. Travis, Lewandowski?
Here.
Ives?
Here.
Lopez Cuniva?
Here.
Okay, we'll start with our resolutions and the votes.
Good evening. Tonight, we would like to welcome senior Rory Flanagan, his brother John, class of 2019, and their mother Jennifer. Rory, please come on up. This resolution is recognizing Rory Flanagan for achieving Eagle Scout status. Whereas Rory Flanagan, a senior student at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved Eagle Scout status, the highest rank awarded by the Scouts VSA for his project with Edward Hines Jr., VA Hospital, in which he organized furniture donations, refurbished the furniture, and gave it away at an event for veterans. And whereas Rory Flanagan has brought honor and distinction to himself, his family, school, community, Scout Masters, and Troop Number Thirty-two, by achieving this status and earning thirty merit badges qualifying him for a bronze palm. And whereas Rory Flanagan was aided and guided in these achievements by his family and Scout Master, Thomas Pondell. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Rory Flanagan is hereby recognized for achieving this prestigious rank of Eagle Scout Award from the Scouts VSA and his Eagle Scout Board of Review on the tenth day of September 2020. Congratulations. Matt? At this time, we'd like his brother John and mother Jennifer to come up. John, as I mentioned earlier, class of 2019, also earned Eagle Scout status his senior year here at LTHI, so we'd like to congratulate him.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
We could do with other masks, can't we?
We can where they're standing.
Yeah, take the mask off.
Yeah, you guys can wear masks. We're all six feet away from it.
We're all six feet.
That's on this year's Christmas card anyway, so you're good.
Right.
Okay, if I say mine off?
Yeah.
Want me to add any answers?
Uh, more, more reading.
You can, you can do it. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Sorry, Matt.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations Rory, John.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, very well done.
Very well done. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Okay, there are no student reports, so next we'll move on to our AFT report. It's Karen Cooper.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just, I just, an update. I know that, I think it's been the last two meetings that I mentioned that we have been negotiating the certified staff. And so at this point, the teams now are working on both the support staff and the certified staff. So just an update as we're working together on that piece. And then I just wanted to take a moment just to speak about the changes with the guidelines. I'm sure that's going to be a topic this evening. And so, you know, Dr. McBride sought out staff feedback, and of course, he's probably going to be sharing that with you this evening. And he's done a nice job communicating with us, and it's very appreciated. And I think that the staff has been flexible. And the calculated approach that the district has taken so far has proven to be successful in educating students and keeping students and staff safe. With us being vaccinated so many, it does make people more comfortable. And I think I mentioned there at the last meeting, getting back into the larger populations. And again, the success of a full population really depends on the school's ability to follow the guidelines in their entirety. And so this staff wants nothing more than to have access to the maximum number of students in the safest way possible. There's nothing more than that that we're looking for. So I believe that this district is going to study those spaces. I know Dr. McBride is thorough about everything like that. And then I believe really that people will be, will, they'll continue to be flexible with the staff that are not vaccinated because of health concerns. And then I'm sure that we're going to be making responsible decisions that benefit the students, and it's taking into consideration all safety. So it's appreciated that the district intends to study all data and feedback from all stakeholders and to use it to make an informed decision. And I think the only other request out there is, I appreciate the time that you're taking on that process and not rushing into it, but also looking forward to the decision because it impacts a lot of what people are planning on doing. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
IASB Governing Board Report.
Um, the always, the next thing that's coming up is the National TruBoard Convention. I don't have the date off the top of my head, but that's the next thing coming up. And I did see some literature where they're talking about doing the state triple I this year. So one needs to come.
Maybe in person.
Yeah, in person.
In person. Okay, thank you. All right, Foundation Board Report.
Yeah, it's, um, we did, was we did last month because of the current situation, we can't do a lot of outside events, and we've been focusing on reorganization and growth and changing internally. Kate, go ahead, Kate. Kate was gracious enough last month to give an update, and she agreed to come back again this month and give you the details, which is, she's much closer to than I am.
Hello, everyone. So really, the biggest update is about the project with Sitco that they wanted to be included in the MIS rebuild. They did like the idea of the digital creation studio, so they want to move forward with it. So I applied for the grant for, it is nine thousand dollars. DLA has agreed to match five thousand dollars. And the foundation voted and has agreed to match four thousand dollars. So we have eighteen thousand dollars total for the equipment that will go into the digital creation studio, which is very exciting. It'll be TV production and podcast equipment, which is great. And really, we have the golf outing on June sixteenth. I'm working on some corporate sponsorships. I'm going to put together a committee of hopefully five people to start the Alumni Association. And I think we're going to have a fundraiser through the PortaPride store, which will be fun, too. And really, that's it. Any questions?
Membership by two, didn't you?
Oh, and we voted, and we have two new members on the Foundation Board, which is awesome. Yeah. That's quick.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you, Kate.
Legislative Report.
There is a lot going on in Springfield, probably, as I mentioned before. I believe something like four thousand bills total introduced, four hundred related to education. The most important, we've talked about this before, but last week, the governor did sign the education bill. And a couple headlines that I put in my report. The first is rigorous coursework. The state legislator is looking at the process that we've already gone through this year, for example. As we sign students up for classes, what is the process that a student from eighth grade to ninth grade and then so on goes through in terms of levels of difficulty, however a school district describes that? K through eight school districts have gifted programs or certain higher or upper or lower levels. High schools have sometimes remedial classes, college prep classes, honors, advanced placement. And a provision that many people are unpacking for 2023 is in the bill, if a student has achieved proficiency, so defining that at a certain course ladder level, that student automatically becomes eligible for the higher course level. And so schools are unpacking that. What does that mean? How do you define proficiency? Also, learning standards. Written in the bill was revisiting learning standards, specifically in social science, and forming what's called the Inclusive History Commission to take a look at the inclusiveness, the telling of the totality of the American story. U.S. history is still required by the state. I think that's where the gaze is primarily by that committee. I believe their report will be due in December thirty-first, 2021. It also requires a committee by ISB to establish state standards in computer science for the first time. Teacher diversity, the bill encourages and incentivizes a number of things are going on to incentivize licensure of a more diverse teaching population. One of the things near and dear to Dr. McBride's heart, because I teach it on the collegiate level, is there's consideration to remove the edTPA, which is a portfolio process. There's a concern in the state legislator if that keeps people out of the profession. There's a special accent on recruiting, training, hiring African-American males because there is just such a lack of African-American males in the teaching workforce in a state that's already experiencing a teacher shortage. And then finally, just to remind the board, new graduation requirements. Students entering ninth grade in 2022, 2023 require instruction in computer literacy. So kids coming in sometime in their high school career, all students will have to have that graduation requirement. We'll have to determine the timing of that. In 2023, 2024, all high school students will have to take a computer science course aligned to the new learning standards. In 2024, 2025, all students will have to take two years of laboratory science. So some of our science courses are not laboratory sciences, like astronomy, a solid science, but not a laboratory science. All students would have to have that. And beginning with the 2028, 2029, 2029 school year, this was really sort of thrown around quite, quite a bit, but ended up here because people realize how much work has to happen. Two years of world language. So that was the final bill in its final form that was signed by the governor. That's my report. There's any questions? Yeah.
Two years of world language means they need to take a language class, like a Spanish, French, German, or something like that?
Or American Sign Language.
That included?
Right, it is, yeah. You know, those are the languages we teach. So everyone would have to take that as a graduation requirement. So the recognition, the reason why originally this was slated, Mrs. Johnson, for 2024, 2025, but there's a recognition that to prepare for that, there is quite a bit that Boards of Education, courses would have to do in order to align with that. For example, if students are now in their six or seven classes required to take two years of world language, that inevitably might mean they're not taking another class. And what would that mean for those departments? So it's giving time for schools to work that out. Another consideration, special education students. World language has been an area that sometimes special education students do not take world language. We would have to prepare that as a graduation requirement as well to ensure that students are successful.
But how is that going to line up with two years of laboratory science?
Well, you can, you can see, now, really, you've got, almost you could think about it, four year-long classes that students didn't previously have to take that they will now have to take. So that also calls on us as a district to say, you know, is that in their first two years? Is there a place with world language and laboratory science that we give a choice? You know, I've shared with the board before that many of our students, most of our students, already take three years of science. We have to make sure two of those are lab science, and we'd have to really get the numbers of students who are not taking at least the two years. They might already be doing that in our district, and it might only be a few more students that we have to capture. So a lot of work, Ed.
Yes, it is. Thank you. All right, moving on to Communications. I believe there is none. And you can see then from, there's the Freedom of Information requests that we have listed there. Can read those. Okay, moving on to Public Comments on Agenda Topics. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in to provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda items they were addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker, per agenda topic, will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to determine the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. And there is none. All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to our approval items. I just need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February twenty-second, 2021, along with the closed session meeting minutes of February twenty-second, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Ives to approve those minutes. Are there any questions to them? There are none. Roll call. Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
abstained.
Johnson?
abstained.
Ives?
Yep.
Lopez Cuniva? Yes. All right, moving on then to approval of board member expenses.
So moved. Oh, I moved to approve the board member expenses.
Okay, I can second that. It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw. I can second it. Lopez Cuniva, are there any questions to those? Roll call. Ives?
Yep.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
abstained.
Johnson?
Uh, yes.
Lopez Cuniva? Yes. Okay, next, we'll have the approval of the treasures for February twenty-second. Just need a motion for that.
So moved.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions to those? Thank you for those. All right. There are none. Roll call. Ives?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Lewandowski?
I don't, I don't, I was here at that meeting, so. Ives abstained, right?
Oh, the treasure.
Oh, okay, yeah, but then, yes, 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 I'm sorry.
Shaw?
Yes.
Strickus?
Yes.
Lopez Cuniva?
Yes.
I just saw.
Right. I don't see that. I just, I knew I missed the meeting.
All right, moving on then to our Superintendent Report.
All right, just a few lighter things. At first, board members will find there's a, just a small gift for you, little, you know, in honor of St. Patrick's Day, a little, LTHS is a person of my persuasion, with the last name McBride would say. You know, everybody's Irish on St. Patrick's Day. So, you know, just a little, little something for, for you.
Thank you.
Also, not, not in my written report, but just, you know, really wanted to give some praise to a number of people. Matt Bartley, Mike Dwyer, Bill Thompson, John Greenan, Trish Sermon, Tim Russ, our public safety officers, all sorts of volunteers, student volunteers, and then, then, then just our entire facility staff. All are people who contributed to the end last weekend of one thousand six hundred senior citizens receiving their vaccinations. Good news, we're starting all over again this weekend. This partnership has really helped. We are going to hold another mass vaccination clinic, this time three thousand two hundred doses on Saturday and Sunday. So that's, that's been an amazing gift. And just so many people have been willing to answer that call and change their schedules. Mike Dwyer had a real athletic day going. He had cheer out on the football field. Congratulations. I don't want to steal our principal's thunder, state champions. He had a huge swim meet that is difficult with COVID to operate. We had an SAT test going on, and sixteen hundred, or actually eight hundred seniors coming in to get vaccinated. That's all. So it, it almost felt like a regular day, you know, here on, on a high school campus. So just, just really amazing, and people doing great things to help our community, to rally, to help, to help each other out. Also, just really thanks to all the board members before we get into this report. Really, all the administrators, Karen Cooper, our entire community. One year ago tomorrow, we met for what was my last public meeting for quite some time. And then things shut down. So we have all been through quite a year. The people behind me, the people at the table, the people in the audience, the parents at home. So I'm giving you just, you know, a big round of applause for making it through this very difficult time in our nation's history and in our district's history. Transitioning into my report, and before we maybe take a look at the new guidance, or really updated guidance, more than new guidance, and revised guidance that we received last week, we did, coming up to the anniversary, we'd completed an after-action review of the whole year. You know, the admin team, they thought that we were going to have a big, big COVID-is-over-party. And Dr. McBride said, hey, let's do an after-action review. And everybody was very excited for that. But we just asked, in all the different areas that we operated, we just asked, what did we expect would happen when this started? I thought it would last three weeks, very naive. What actually occurred? What went well and why? And what could be improved upon? And all of those are important because I think it's, in any kind of crisis, the after-action is just as important because, especially in education, we're very quick to say, well, we could improve this, we could improve that, we could, we could take advantage of this. And, and we don't really take a few minutes to really say, wow, these are the things that, that went well. And the purpose of this report is not to call out Karen Cooper, or Trish Sermon, or Jen Webre, or John Greenan, or Angela Huntton. But I think, you know, you in the audience, those of you here know that everyone from Matt Dusterhoff to Ann Cuniva made a positive contribution in this tough time. Just a few key observations we made, and obviously, this is very brief. Planning in advance really helped us. We started our school shutdown planning in February, so when it came, we were able to execute that plan. In terms of human resources, we believe, we, we say staff are the most important asset that we have as a district, then really carrying that out. And being very proud to have a partnership with, with our union. Your support of people in recognizing that this was going to be a tough time for people economically, emotionally, and in their work. Flexibility with staff was so appreciated. I think it really showed our staff, you are the most important asset that we have. Curriculum and instruction, building systems that were never built before, that never even existed on a mass scale. Communications, the board's wisdom at this very meeting last year to create some assets and communications that became vital because we could only communicate electronically. You'll hear more about that tonight. Community outreach, another thing that I think we, we really did well at and thought through was keeping the CWC, keeping athletics, keeping activities going as much as we could. Things like this vaccination clinic. Technology, really, without Matt Dusterhoff and his staff, it's hard to imagine we, we would be nowhere. It would be very challenging if our students weren't one-to-one. And we didn't have the, the spine, the technology spine. And then business operations, from providing our students from lunch, ingenious people like Bill Thompson, Stephanie Kroy saying, let's enroll in the school lunch program, to thinking very carefully about the IDSP, I mean, the ISBE and IDPH guidelines. All of that, those were all things that we, we felt that, that we needed to be astute about and thoughtful about. And certainly, there are many a places where, where we still have work to do. We certainly could never say in that after-action review that, that we're perfect. Many places, we could go right down that list with communication, with technology, with curriculum, with committees, where we could have, should have, wanted to do a better job, and we're just not there yet. And that's okay to say. I'm going to pivot now, if there are any questions the board members have about that after-action review, just taking stock, to the revised guidance that we received on March nine from the state superintendent. And what I hope to do is open this up to board members, really create a space where board members can talk to each other. Certainly, all of the important people in, in this room are here who are leaders in our district. Part of it is coming back to August twentieth, when we approved a plan, and staying rooted and anchored in the philosophy of that plan with priorities on safety, equity, access to learning, learning, staying flexible, and always communicating. A few things in the revised guidance. Still, all of the precautions to prevent spread of disease Still, all of the precautions to prevent spread of disease are really still there. Definitively requiring appropriate PPE, that is still something we need to do, we're doing it right now. Social distancing, being observed as much as possible, but some changes in that area. Contact tracing, something we've already been doing. Increased school disinfection and cleaning, we've been doing that, and then hand washing and respiratory etiquette. Few revised guidelines, some things in there that are of special note for us. School capacity at fifty students per bus. Large school areas such as cafeteria and gyms, the capacity has been expanded, but if there are spaces where students eat or remove their mask, they still have to be six feet apart. Social distancing, and this is an important feature for us as well, can be three to six feet, based on the needs of that room. Cannot be less than six feet, I mean, excuse me, not than, not less than three feet, but cannot be greater, or can be greater than six feet, but within a range. So you might see classrooms where you could have desks, students head-to-head, three feet, four feet, five feet, six feet. As much social distancing as a space can, can maximize and still be functional. And then special precautions for unvaccinated staff. There are staff who, because of medical conditions, pregnancy, religious beliefs, personal beliefs, are not vaccinated, so we have an affirmative responsibility to stage settings for their protection and keeping six feet. Close contact has still been defined as closer than six feet for more than fifteen minutes. The CDC and IDPH are no longer recommending that we check temperatures, but in this meeting, I might share that we might continue that practice for a while, really to, to have everybody on point that we should all be symptom checking, we should all be aware of, of our symptoms. And then diagnostic testing, encouraging diagnostic testing of students who are symptomatic or exposed to COVID- nineteen, and there have been great advances in that. So I, I want to open it up, just to board members and your thoughts and your questions as we consider this. As we do that, just want to share a few surveys with you. In your packet, there is a staff survey that we used via thought exchange, and then a, a Google Forms parent survey. So just very quickly to walk board members through this. In the staff survey, three hundred and fifty-four staff members participated. They contributed three hundred and eighty-one thoughts and interacted with each other's thoughts sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-six times. The word cloud shows you some of the words that are most important to our staff. Schedule, labs, space, change, safety, that desire for consistency that we've all had. The top thoughts in this thought exchange, please tell us as soon as possible, the stress of the unknown has been unbearable at times. And as Mrs. Cooper mentioned, we do want to get an answer based on your advisement to our parents and to our staff as soon as possible, but we also want to make sure that we do the proper analysis of all of our facilities and all of our procedures to maintain safety. Make a decision everyone can live with until summer, changes are exhausting, let's do something that we can really stick with. And then, I think if we did go back, go to full days, I would recommend Wednesday being a checkup day, keeping our Wednesday schedule. That was, those were the three strongest sentiments among our staff. The, the themes, you can kind of see the top themes of schedule changing and concerns, safety. And then there's a, a theme in there about students who might not feel comfortable coming back, or students are under quarantine. And that would be something in this discussion we would have to talk about, as I anticipate that would increase if we move to the new, to the updated guidelines. Some other themes go a little bit deeper. Schedule change, you can see some of the themes there, the desire for consistency, safety, asking us to put safety as we consider this at the top of our list. Comfortability, the board and, and our leadership team really being aware that there might be students if we follow these updated guidelines who might not feel comfortable coming back into school. And then differences, thought exchange gives you sort of two sides and what they say in the middle. The two sides are, are probably predictable. One side feels that this might, you know, full day and these updated guidance might be hasty. Another side feels very strongly that school, students need to be back as much as possible in, into school. In the middle is, is really a group that would like as much communication as possible and keeping our, our Wednesday schedule. Any, any questions on this staff survey through thought exchange? This is very brief. You could imagine with sixteen thousand interactions, there's quite a bit of depth.
How many teachers want to go back full-time?
That does not give us a raw vote on that, Mrs. Vickers. So it doesn't give a, a raw sort of vote on that. What it really does is it, this thought exchange was designed to ask, you know, the question was, as the Board of Education discusses allowing more students to attend school daily, what are the important issues we should consider?
Okay. I didn't know what that question is.
I, I don't mean to speak for, yeah, I don't mean to speak for Mrs. Cooper.
Yeah.
But as she said in her report, you know, our staff has been great, and I think the number one concern is that we keep working on safety, that there isn't any kind of short cutting or, or, I, I, you know, glossing past something. There's a thoroughness in our analysis, and we've done that all year, we've kept disease off campus. And, you know, at the same time, I would say I'm very proud of that, I'm cautious about it. In the parent survey, we did do that more as raw numbers. There were a thousand responses as of about a half hour ago.
Okay.
About seventy percent would like to see all students at East and Central return for a full day, full, full student return. And about almost twenty percent who would like to keep the in-person hybrid learning schedule we're on today.
Thank you.
We asked if, if we did, you know, how would your student get to school if we, we used the new, the updated guidance? Forty percent said that they would take school-provided transport. That's significant because that number tells us that in East and Central, we could expect a huge volume of traffic. How soon should students return? About fifty-five percent said April sixth. About twenty percent said April nineteenth, and about twenty-six, twenty-five percent said Monday, August sixteenth. It's, it's too soon to return. And then the final question, length of day. Bless you. If you support full in-person learning for students, what length of day? And sixty-four percent of parents said seven fifty AM to two oh three PM with grab-and-go prepackaged lunch, and thirty-five percent of parents said seven fifty AM to twelve fifty-three PM. There are voluminous comments that we'll get to board members in my Friday update, but I thought for the purposes of tonight, you would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Look, if we go back and, um, your kids are coming on the buses, will we have to make two runs or a run?
We will not. Right now, we, we don't typically have fifty students on our buses unless it, we've made a mistake with a route, right? And even in that case, we have buses that kind of, in openings like this Hoover, in case students need to be picked up. Right now, we have significant spacing between students on our buses. We don't see our buses being up over about thirty-five, and maybe even lower because families are telling us, at least in this sample, that forty percent of our families would not send their students via bus. So at least our best estimate right now is that we would have plenty of room on our buses.
Then we would have to send those buses?
We would. We have a procedure that we already use right now in hybrid for a couple of things that do have to happen on the bus, and one for the board to consider. We do our bus drivers, we do a cleaning afterwards, we do every time we use the bus. We do our bus drivers when they pick up and when they are taking away. They do have to know every student in every seat. So they do have to create this, almost a seating chart every time they transport, and the reason why that is, is for contact tracing. So as you can imagine, if more students are getting on the bus, the contact tracing might take a little bit more time just to make sure that, that we know. There have been cases this year where we've had good systems of almost like a seating chart on the bus, but we have had to go to bus cameras to really ascertain, you know, in a final way, who, who might have been closer than six feet for more than fifteen minutes, and all of our buses have interior cameras. Other, other board thoughts? Yeah, Dr. Shaw?
The only piece we, I mean, we've obviously experienced full remote, hybrid, the full gamut. The only thing we haven't done is all-in. Now, if a student is not comfortable coming back, is the opportunity for them to go full remote still an option or not?
We, you know, we have, what we're doing right now is we've identified about sixty-six students who selected hybrid in-person learning this semester, who in, in, in this mode have not felt comfortable coming in. And so right now, Mrs. Christophero is working with a number of people, Dr. Huntington, Dr. Web Ray, Josh Oster, Grant Ferkelak, to work through those sixty-six and say, where are they? Even just where are they with hybrid right now, because they're, they're not attending and saying they don't feel comfortable. Switching them to Apex or fully remote could be a solution because we're at a point with them where their teachers are just not seeing them at all. Some of those students are doing enough work in their class that they're doing well, they're passing. Some of those students are, are not doing well at all. As we see, if, 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 if the board feels comfortable with the recommendation and the dialogue we have tonight is to take the updated guidance and go more full in-person, we probably need to anticipate that we might have more students in that situation. And that's where working one-on-one individually with what a person needs to fully understand their day, Apex might become an option for them. We did at the beginning of both semesters, offer an option, more, more families joined Apex this semester, and we felt good about advertising that and making that available to folks. And we've always been upfront with our public that this possibility of revised guidance that opens the door for us, we've always been clear about that. And, you know, to Dr. Shaw's point, just, all of our board members should be aware that every agency, every superintendent I've talked to, we, we do expect students, more students to be in quarantine. And the reason why that is, is we're, we're pleased at how many classes we can get close to six feet, but we know we have some classes that will have to be three feet. And so by definition, given the length of our classes, that would be a close contact if a student who's positive walks in. Now, one thing we also know, and I'd welcome any comments from any of my colleagues, our parents have done an outstanding job. One of the things we are nervous about when we sat at this table on August twentieth is would parents tell us if a child's COVID positive, tell us if a child has been COVID exposed, or tell us if a child has COVID symptoms? Parents have been outstanding with that. I think it's been one of the things, and our staff has been outstanding with that, even at times when they've had to quarantine, which is very inconvenient. Presently, Illinois has a more stringent, strident quarantine process than the CDC, and there are some voices asking Illinois maybe to come more in line with the CDC. But, but they're not. We just received today a memo about quarantine from Will County Health, and Illinois is, is really staying where it's at today. Other thoughts or questions? Probably, you know, what, for quite some time, as, as we've seen safety, as we've seen positive results from, not positive COVID, but positive health results in, in our tracking, many high school superintendents have been asking the state board and IDPH to revise two of these key guidelines. The six feet as an absolute and capacity in large spaces like a cafeteria. And we're really at that point where that's, that's happened for us. That's a positive because that opens the door for more students to return to in-person learning. It's a challenge because we know we would have to have answers for quarantine, and students who are just in, families are not comfortable in that environment.
We can do three feet and then a lunch roll?
We cannot, because any place where students unmask, and that really would only be when students eat, it has to be six feet.
How would you handle lunch?
I'm sorry, what?
How would you handle lunch?
Yeah, we would handle lunch very similar to the way that we handle lunch now. The difference is, we can add more seats as long as they're six feet. Right now, the previous guidance was we could only have fifty seats in the cafeteria, although we know we could add more and still keep students six feet apart and continue using the gym, but students would still have to keep six feet apart and have a separation between the staff supervising them. In terms of food, we've been doing grab-and-go successfully all year, and prepackaged, pre-wrapped, or students can bring their own. But the key is that we are still under the school lunch program, so every student can get a free lunch. So that makes it accessible, easy to grab, no waiting in lines, none of those kind of things, money changing hands, that kind of thing.
So we would do grab and go?
Mm-hmm. We would just keep going with our lunch procedures. The, the difference is now we've, we can increase the capacity in these, these sort of cafes that we, we have set up. We could not increase capacity in the classrooms where students eat because we wouldn't be able to add more students in there because then you wouldn't have six feet. But these larger spaces, we can.
And we're still, sorry, Doc.
Oh, go, jump right in, please do.
I wanted to make clear that the grab-and-go is no money exchanged because the, the national food, the national school lunch, summer food service program has been extended. So we're still in that program where any student who needs or wants a lunch can take it for free. So there's no worry about having to try and collect. So, sorry to interrupt.
Well, no, you weren't interrupting at all.
Dr. McBride?
Yeah.
One of the things, you know, when we look at this, and the teachers, student, the administration have been through an awful lot in the last twelve months. It has been remarkable how well they've all done, and, you know, I, I think there is out there some yearning for some normalcy. And, you know, in the programs that the survey has presented and suggested, I, I personally, and speaking for myself, would like to see them back four days a week, full days. But also, when we do that, the, you know, the high school administration and, and teachers and staff have shown how we can change on the fly. Things have changed, circumstances come up, and it's addressed. I would like to have those addressed this spring, rather than when we start the fall, we start addressing things all over again. I mean, I'd like to, you know, hopefully start in August. These students and teachers have normalcy for a full year, and if we have to, you know, learn, you know, have some learning pains or growth pains bringing them back, let's get it in this spring when they've, they've already been disrupted.
And, and, and I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Ives, because I think one of the things in our after-action review that differentiated us from many districts is, we immediately, May one, when we could, we started bringing people back on campus. First, some of our educational support personnel and administrators, then our, our twelve-month staff, then, you know, the rest of the story, athletics, some summer programs, and what that helped is exactly what, what you're saying right now is rehearsal. It, it helped us rehearse and get good as we got closer and closer to the beginning of the year. I do suspect, like you're saying, that some of these mitigations, mask wearing, physical distancing, will likely be required in the fall. We'll be living with these things again because there is some sort of, what's going to happen when we all have to get our booster? Is this going to be like the flu? There's a little bit of unknown looming out there. So I appreciate your comment about, right now, rehearsing and getting good. That's also why I appreciate the comment from so many colleagues about keeping the Wednesday structure, because every week, that gives us a chance to adjust, to, to say, hey, we have a day where we're remote, our teachers have time professionally in the morning to meet, we can re-stage, we can work with the schedule. We can't do everything, but we can take that day to address concerns that just, just we didn't think about, planned for, we didn't think about. That's just really the same idea. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
Did you survey the students?
Uh, survey, Dr. Green and Dr. Greenen are going to be surveying students this week. It just was the closeness of time, and we were concerned that we wouldn't get, last week, when we were our last, what I hope is our last week of full remote, we were concerned with students being fully remote, we might not have gotten a high return as when they're here at school. here at school. And, you know, we could have them take it.
Are we in hybrid now?
We are in hybrid.
One of the students had remarked, remarked about, you know, when you go from remote to hybrid, back and forth, that whole thing of doing stressful stuff. Did you guys do that when they came up?
In terms of like the wellness things that we're, you know, I could not say, Mrs. Johnson, how much of that is going on in individual classrooms. I know that's going on in physical education. They've extended that and continued that. I know more and more colleagues are picking up on that. We do that with ourselves, with this great program. I enjoy it. We had a colleague do a stand-up comedy routine for 15 minutes. We do drop everything and relax every Wednesday. That just reminds all of us to take just 15 minutes, to breathe a little deeper and relax, much needed during this period of time.
Because that kids' survey said that the kids were stressed, number one issue was stressed.
Right. And then the companion research on that is, that is a concern. The stress that's going on at home with the isolation, the disconnection of students to the routine of seeing others, being with others, being with teachers, producing a whole different kind of anxiety.
What are you going to do with the passing in the halls?
That's a really good question. One of the most important things, there's a group, ABC Science Collaborative, that has some fairly, and some other groups, that have some fairly solid research from the year-end pandemic, that it pointed to the fact that congregating in the hallway, stopping, talking, being close, is really what makes you worried about disease spread, as opposed to people passing, even in circumstances where there are high numbers of people, moving and being masked with the other mitigations helps. Many parents have asked, why are we starting in the morning the way that we're starting? And the reason why we start, just to remind the board and folks who might be listening in, is so that students get here and go directly to class, so that they're not, you feel terrible as a high school person saying, so they're not hanging out with each other. That's a horrible thing to say, right? But we know that if they congregate, they hang out, that's where there can be problems. As long as students keep moving, keep separated, that's an important mitigation. There will be concern, you're very astute, Mrs. Johnson, there will be concern, if we move back to full in-person, of the number of bodies in the hallway. But it's just important to remember that motion, remember masking, hand sanitation, and the other mitigations we have in place. Other board opinions, thoughts, questions?
I'm in favor, as Mr. Ives said, of people coming back so that we can kind of work out the bugs before the fall, just as long as we are able to follow the guidelines that are set forth by the government agencies.
And just, oh, go ahead, Mrs. Bickus, I just.
I'm just waiting.
Going through that process.
No, no, go ahead.
No, I was just going to share, there is a process. A number of us went to a webinar with our attorneys, Robin Schwartz, they really outlined a process to assess the system. So as much as we would love to tomorrow make an announcement, or make an announcement to our staff or to our parents, we want to make sure we go through that checklist. We have checked the three-to-six-foot capacity of every classroom. We have checked what we would need to do in the cafeterias and gyms, what we might need to rent, what we might need to order. Do we have the people power, the time to stage it? Our food service, we need to work with our health services. We are looking at many things for health services to make sure that they can keep up. In your wisdom, you hired more health aides, which is outstanding. Also, we're looking at a very modest pilot of using the ByNext Now card, which is a rapid, a rapid test, a swab test, that has now been cleared, most recently, for AFE-symptomatic individuals who've been exposed. So we have our license to do that, we're walking through the process. We're taking it slow and methodical to make sure that with a population of 4,000 students and then almost 500 adults, and the health staff that we have, we just, we can't open up to be a testing site. But can we possibly help with quarantine by piloting some use of those ByNext cards in a very strategic way? So we're walking through a whole analysis of all of our systems. That'll probably take us the rest of this week. Yeah, Mrs. Bickus.
You just answered my question. How long is that going to take? And do you think we can get these kids back to school by April 6?
I think we can, if that's how we, you know, ultimately all of us feel about it, and that analysis is positive, it's leaning in that direction. Today, you know, a number of people in this room knew that they had a draft due to me today, so that I could report to you. Because obviously, if those drafts of transport, food service, classroom capacity were negative, I would just be honest with you to say, I don't think we can do it. I don't think we can stage it. Our preliminary analysis is we believe we can stage it. There will be difficulties.
Sure.
You know, everyone should expect inconveniences like traffic. We will have more students on quarantine. It's, that's a safety mitigation. And we'll have to be thinking, we will have some families that will say, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with the building of almost 3,000 students. Yeah, Dr. Shaw?
Just as far as the quarantining, obviously, from the other perspective, the staffing of the people that are doing the contact tracing, do, are we, are you, not we, are you guys planning on restructuring how that's going to look due to the number that could potentially be quarantined?
Well, it's hard to imagine, Dr., Mr. Kandari, how do you feel about that? It's hard to imagine being more busy than we ever were. You know, I think we, our system, our contact tracing system, really got tested in November, when, you know, this area saw the highest spike, and it endured. It was, it was very challenging, it was very difficult. You know, what are your thoughts, Tony, about that?
We've been looking at the health aides and how they can assist with things. We've had them coming in maybe one or two days a week, just depending on numbers that were coming in, but I think now we're looking at expanding that to maybe two or three or even four days a week, you know, to kind of assist our three, our three building nurses. Also, again, looking at if they're not doing temperature checks as they come in, that could be a time that the health aides can be helping with, you know, assist with other things, making phone calls to parents and things of that nature, so.
Is there any board member who has, you know, a different opinion, a strong opinion? These, the updated guidance is very clear that the goal is calling public school system to get as many students back into school for as much time as possible. You know, our attorneys have said that. In its own way, our liability insurers have acknowledged that, have given some very clear You know, other school entities are looking at it in the same way and trying to think through that. You know, belonging to the high school district of organization in Illinois, also looking a little bit towards colleagues in DuPage County, I would report to the board that most schools are looking in that direction. Now, some of those schools have 40% to 45% of their students who elected to be fully in remote the rest of the year. So when they say going back four or five days a week, 100%, they're really bringing in 55% to 60% of their total student population. Lincoln Way is probably the best mirror to us. If we look at District 230, Andrew, Stag, Sandberg, about 35% to 40% of their students are fully remote. So that obviously declines the population that would be in their building. We have an interesting phenomenon, 9% of our students have elected to go fully remote.
Was that nine?
Nine. And, sorry, I'm not, I'm not barking at you, Dr. Shaw. I'm enunciating through my mask. And we've maintained on in-person days, 96% to 97% attendance rates.
I think that states volumes of the confidence level they have in Duke.
I agree.
Mr. Bartley, today, you know, sent, sent the report back, and I think, kind of coming into it, you know, today, we had 94.79%, which does not surprise me coming back from the week of remote. But even that, 94.79%, that's high, right? So.
So, all of our staff is vaccinated?
I would not say all of our staff. About 85% of our staff is vaccinated. There is a group of staff that, you know, for those reasons, pregnancy, some kind of physical situation a person has, you know, religious belief, personal preference. I really appreciate the fire district. We did last, at the end of last week, I shared with Mrs. Cooper, a number of staff came forward, seeing these revised guidelines, rethought getting vaccinated, and the fire district was willing to fold them into this weekend's clinic. So we're very happy with that.
Do we have enough substitutes on standby?
Yes. We do. Yeah. That system, you know, I don't want to say, Mrs. Johnson, it's hard, I'm going to say it, it's hard to imagine it more stretched than it was before, but it's, it's almost been stretched to its breaking point and held. So. One of the things that benefited us is when we made a commitment in the summer to hybrid early on, we actually attracted substitutes from districts that declared they were going full remote. And one of the things, I would say to this Board of Education, your wisdom in doing that, in paying bus drivers, in paying people who in remote periods couldn't be at their station, those people have stayed loyal. So when we've come back on, those staff are still present. You know, what I would want the board just to be aware is of the great benefit that we could do if we use these guidelines and we find that we are able to do it, but then also, everyone to be eyes wide open, that it would be a challenge. If April 6th is the week, that will be a challenging, difficult week. We will all be learning to walk again, as one of our students said, I have to get back into in-person shape. And probably that would go for some of us, too, right?
Why would it be?
You know, I appreciate, I don't know if any of my colleagues, any of the administrative team, if there's something, I've surely missed something. You know, just, just again, I think it's important for the board to understand some of the key players, obviously, Mr. Dusterhoff, great appreciation to Dr. Webb Ray, who's really looking at the master schedule, Trish Sermon, who's looking at the facilities at Central, Mr. Bartley, and also along with Mr. Thompson, looking at the facilities, Dr. Green, Dr. Greenan, sort of leading the effort campus-wide with buildings, Mrs. Christophero, leading work with Dr. Huntington in terms of curriculum, and then also special populations, which incidentally have been going strong and in-person since August 17. Obviously, Mr. Kandari with Personnel, Mrs. Croy with Operations and Finance, and then very important, being able to communicate our story, because it's so hard to describe the fine print. Yeah, Mr. Ives.
Just a point of clarification, because I know we're talking about the four-day, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it's not open cleaning. Because we're going to start, if we go forward with April 6th, that's a Tuesday. So because we're giving up that Monday, are we going to give up that Wednesday, and the kids will be here Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday that week?
I, that was my initial thinking, but I've revised it. And here's the reason why. I think it's important to get students on a schedule where they have that, let's just call it Wednesday, and I'm only putting it in air quotes, because the following week, we have to test on a Tuesday. We have to give the state test to juniors on a Tuesday, so that day, we should probably run the Wednesday schedule. Also, I think if we come back, and it's April 6th is our target date, it would be a good idea to take our breath the next day, to assess all of our staging, to look at all the decisions we've made, to make any readjustments that we need to make, and then just get into that rhythm of Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, just to have that reset and give everyone a chance, just to catch their breath after doing that initial day.
Fair enough.
Thank you for the survey, and it speaks out of us, you know, especially with the kids wanting to go back. And of course, our most concern is just the safety of our students and staff.
And I wanted to ask you, Mrs. Keenan, you know, when we talked on the phone, you know, the feedback from parents and from staff was important, so I hope, you know, hope for all the board members, you've heard that. You know, it's so rich and it's so deep that it's difficult. I feel, you know, you're almost doing it a disservice by summarizing it, but for efficiency. But I appreciate that people participate in these things, because they point in the right direction for us, because we can't possibly see everything.
I'll make one more comment. I think we have such a strong administrative team and staff here that you guys can do this, and our community is counting on you guys to do this for all of us. We have been in the forefront, leading all of these other school districts, and I applaud you guys for that, because they are always asking you, coming back to Dr. McBride, coming back to all of you, asking you guys, how are you doing this differently that's making so successful? Just the, just your attendance rating itself across the state of Illinois is amazing. So you guys should applaud yourselves and say, we can do this, and we will do this. So those are my final comments to all you guys, and good luck. I think it's fantastic that we are going to do this.
I'd like new T-shirts, we can do it.
We can do it.
All right, well, with your permission, that's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda items, we need the approval of the consent agenda items from number two to number 12. Need a motion for that.
I move to approve the consent agenda items, two through number 12 as written.
Seconded by, I'm sorry, motion by Dr. Shaw, seconded by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions or concerns to any of those consent agenda items? Mary Nunn, roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.
Lopez, Camila?
Yes. All right. Action consideration items, the awarding of the bus bid for six new buses, need a motion for that. I can motion that.
I'll second it, yeah.
It's been motioned by Miss Camila and seconded by Miss Bickus to award the bus bid for six new buses. Any questions on that? Row call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez, Camila?
Yes. Next, we have the authorization to create a bid specification to seal code district parking lots, pathways, and resurface the 12 tennis courts.
So.
There.
It's been motioned by Miss Bickus and seconded by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions to that?
Seem like yesterday.
Right, back at it again.
You know, I'll be here eight years, you guys, in May, so, seem like yesterday.
Set your clock.
Exactly, set your clock.
All right, okay, row call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Bickus?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez, Camila?
Yes. All right, next, our next action consideration is to remove prepared floor and install LVP flooring in cafeteria. At this point, we are going to table this action consideration item until we gather some more information on it. If you have any questions, you know, you can.
I was just wondering, I know you said you were going to, looking at, we go on that floor.
Mm-hmm.
Is there potential asbestos there?
Is there potential asbestos there? Yeah, there's always potential asbestos. I don't know, Mr. Thompson, if we've tested that for asbestos yet, but there's a mitigation process for that. Generally, now, that kind of asbestos removal does not require, you know, that type of asbestos, asbestos doesn't require like a whole building shut down as it has in the past. Any thought about asbestos?
For the.
Flooring in the cafeteria? Flooring in the cafeteria?
No, there's no question. It was all done in ninety-six, so, yeah.
Great.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Next, we have the action consideration for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school calendar.
So, Anne, wait a minute. Don't we have to, I'm sitting here thinking of Robert's rules. Don't we have to?
You do. You have to table it. I apologize.
I'm like, great, you got to table this.
There is a motion for that to table it?
I'll second it. Or do you second it?
All right. Who, all she did?
I'll motion it.
Okay. And then I can second it. Okay. All right. Roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Lopez, Kaliva?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Vickers, for pointing that out.
No problem.
All right. Action consideration now. It's the school calendar for the next school year.
It's going to happen. There is going to be a school year next year. You know, presented this last, you know, last month as a first draft. It really does mirror the school calendar that we've used this year with an August sixteenth date and then complimentary pairing with our seven feeder districts as much as possible. So if there's any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you. All right. There is no policy. That's a.
You have to vote.
On the calendar.
On the calendar.
You do. I don't mean to point my finger at you, Mrs. Lewis.
I'll make the motion to approve the calendar. Really threw you off, Anne. I'm sorry.
I'm just like, okay, I want to get out of here.
You were so happy that you didn't have policies. Board members, Earth Press one oh seven out there. We're just pacing you.
All right. All right. It's been motioned and seconded. All right. Roll call.
Vickers?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez, Kaliva?
Yes. All right. Now, no policy consideration. All right. Next. All right. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to get comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak and sign in and provide all information requested on the signing sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The Board President will call speakers up by name announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the signing sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up. And at this time, there is none. All right. And then moving on to our information report, Principal's report.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Well, it felt like spring on Saturday with sixty degrees. And then when we were dismissing the kids today, the sleet was coming down. And I'm glad that I had a coat in the back of the car because I felt more like January than March. But we are really excited at some of the things that were put in the report and even some of the updates. Our athletic department, kudos to Mike Dwyer and what he's been able to accomplish with his staff. Him and Matt Eber and Ann Hayes in that office have been working tirelessly to give our kids opportunities. And you can see our kids are having great success. You know, our badminton team, they went undefeated in their dual meets. They actually were the SWSC conference champions. Our cheerleading group, Saturday, how exciting for them. What a great time that was out on Porter Stadium for them to be able to watch the award ceremony and bring us the latest state championship. So congratulations to them being the co-ed two thousand twenty-one state champions. So very proud of all of the kids and coaches there. Our dance team finished best ever, second place in the SWSC. Congratulations to them. They had a great season. And we're really proud about the participation there because in our dance program, we had one of the largest squads in the state with over twenty-four girls participating. And you know, in dance, that's very hard to choreograph and coordinate twenty-four girls. So we're very proud of that participation. Our boys' basketball team, they really had a great season. They ended up finishing twelve and four with the last two losses in overtime. They were runner-up in the SWSC to the team that we lost in four overtimes by one point. But it was a very exciting season. Very proud of the boys. The girls finished up strong on a three-game win streak. So we were very proud of big wins over East and Providence. So those were some big highlights for the girls. And then our boys' swim and dive team on Coach Oswald, they, for the first time ever, won the SWSC conference title. So they were very excited about that. Our boys' bowling team had a great season, finished fourth in the only invite they had this year and finished second in the SWSC. And then our girls' team, they won the unofficial state tournament that was held in Hananeega on February twenty-eighth. And then they also captured the SWSC crown. And then there was an invitational at the end of the year, the Trevion State Virtual Invitational, which included a sectional, which they won the sectional, and then actually finished second in the invite. So we're very proud of that. And then, you know, our spring sports have begun. Our athletic department wanted us to really thank Bill Thompson, you know, Tim Russ, Ben McIntyre, Bill Howard for all of their efforts because we have so many things going on here inside and out of the building. And being able to overlap the sports like we have has been very taxing on our staff and on the facilities. And the guys are doing a phenomenal job making sure that we are ready to go. The facilities are as top tip shape as always. And so kudos to them working tirelessly around the clock to make that happen for our kids. And we actually want to also thank you, the Board. The athletic department said thank you for that turf area that was put out at the athletic fields. Truly is top-notch. And with the weather and space, we have really been utilizing that. So some of the coaches and the athletes have really taken advantage of it. And they wanted to say thank you to you for doing it in that manner and providing us with an extra space to be able to utilize for our kids. We didn't know that it was going to come in that handy, but it really has. So we appreciate the support that you've given. And then our Activities Director, Brian Lesner, is very excited to announce about the LTHS Prom Experience that's going to take place on Saturday, April twenty-fourth. They have a travel theme that will be taking place. So the kids will actually be taking off and going through five different locations here at East Campus. Tickets will be sold online. In addition, what Brian and his staff are able to do is provide an experience on the following day. So on the twenty-fifth, all students, so juniors, sophomores, and freshmen will get an opportunity to enjoy the interactive games and activities and music that Boom is going to provide. So it's kind of an exciting thing that all of our kids can take advantage of after the prom experience that we'll have for our seniors. Horticulture Club, one of the exciting things around here in the spring is a horticulture club is gearing up for our annual plant sale on May sixth through eighth. And actually, right now, they are selling green and purple shamrocks, doing a little bit of a fundraiser there for St. Patrick's Day, so if anybody's interested. And then the last thing for our activities, kudos to our freshman board. They actually did a competition during February for Black History Month, a door decorating competition. And there's a lot of participation that took place. So our kids from the Equity Action Group, our Student Equity Action Committee, they actually won third prize because we did have voting take place. They won third place with their door of Angela Davis. Cheerleading won second place with their door on Simone Biles. And the Interact Club did a phenomenal door that was really outstanding with Trina Baxter. So that was a really exciting thing that took place. The door was amazing. I don't know if you, the pictures of the door.
We have pictures of the door.
But it didn't even do it justice to see it in person. It was absolutely beautiful. What's that? We have pictures, but what I was saying is the pictures don't do it justice. Like seeing it in person, it was actually quite remarkable. So.
That was, that door, because I coordinate the Interact Club for the Rotary Club that has been submitted to the district in Rotary International.
Awesome. Yeah, well deserved because it was spectacular.
It's pretty impressive, actually.
It was.
So they did a, the head guy there, and he did a PowerPoint with it. It came out really nice.
Very cool. Awesome.
I'd like to see it.
Okay. Well, you know, we can definitely send you, if not a PowerPoint, I will make sure to send you to get your pictures.
Have these pictures.
Yes. Thank you.
I actually set her up to say, who is these people?
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. The discipline report provided by Mr. Matt Bartley and the attendance report in summary. First of all, for discipline, you could see that numbers for infractions continue to remain low, which has been the case throughout the semester, throughout the entire school year, I should say. Do want to say and thank Matt Bartley and Trish Sermon for leading our Student Behavior Committee as well as the students, staff, and parents who participated. And next month, we will have some recommendations for you regarding the work of that group as our deans, as our administration, getting input from parents and staff as well and families. As we will bring some of those suggestions to you. And again, that'll be next month. But you can see, once again, incidents continue to remain low. Tardy to school, no ID being the top two. And as was alluded to earlier in regarding attendance, you know, we are very proud that our attendance continues to stay strong. As you can see, coming in at ninety-five and a half percent. It's something that we, of course, are always monitoring. We know, as we mentioned earlier in our discussion from the Superintendent's Report, that as we look forward to prepare our buildings for our students to return a hundred percent, four days a week, we know that there will be challenges. But we are definitely committed as a team, as a group, to doing the best that we can for our kids. So any questions from the Board of Education?
Late to school. So that's when you're in hybrid, that you're late then? Late to school.
All late to school, tardy.
Oh, tardy to school, yes. Yes.
And that's during hybrid, isn't it?
That's during hybrid time, right?
Yes. Those will be on the in-person.
And the same thing with the ID?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, those are still policies that we still have and that we're still enforcing.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. How many times can you repeat SWSC champion? I mean, that's a lot, you know what I mean? It's amazing.
Where are we going to put all those trophies?
We're going to need to create some more space and we hope to have our cheerleading team here possibly next month to do a resolution. That'll be great.
That would be great. Information report, communication plan update.
And as we kind of get our communications team in place to communicate with you, just to preface this, I think one of the most important things, as it has turned out, is having this communication team. Janine Wheeler, Deanna Gregorich, the addition of Eric Slager. You know, you see both Eric and Deanna in many different things. I'm going to turn it over to Janine to walk you through. And really, this presentation is almost taking a year where you had a communications plan presented to you and it made certain promises. Where are those promises now? Little did we know, as we were on the very cusp of COVID, that electronic communication would be everything. So, Janine?
Yeah. So, good evening. It's very nice to be here. And I think rather than a formal PowerPoint or anything, I'm going to give you a test drive, kind of like I did last year, just to kind of go over some of the things that we've accomplished, some things we set out to do and how we do them. So a year ago, we were talking about some of the decisions you'd made in nineteen that helped us to do what we needed to get done. Specifically, we overhauled the website. And that really carried us through in March, in the spring, when everything kind of shut down. We were able to very easily maneuver the website to do what we needed to do. But the decision you made in March, last March, is what has really upped our game. It really gave us the tools and the talent to really rise to the occasion. So your decision last March, last spring, to hire our videographer and web content manager, Eric Slager, has helped us to really form a better team and use all our resources and use them well and use them really professionally. So again, before we had Eric, it was kind of funny in the spring. Our idea of video would be Dr. McBride in his house with his phone, making a video of himself and I'd slap it up on the website. So we've really come a long way.
Especially if you want to see Dr. McBride in his house.
We thought it was okay. So I just want to go over, you can see, if you had a chance to go through the, our communications plan, it's not a huge departure from what we did last year because I still feel these are very solid goals and objectives. And when you said about a plan, it's always nice when you do accomplish something in every area. And I really do feel that we did that. So I just want to talk about some of these things of, like garnering public support, some of the things that we've talked about with our reopening. We used all kinds of things. We used our, there was a lot of great work being done, but what Bill Thompson and his crew was doing with food service, everything all coming together. But we had to tell that story. And so we used our website. We used the town halls with Dr. McBride and the other administrators. We used these videos. So in the summer, as soon as Eric Slager got here, he hit the ground and we started really working it. We recruited some Pat Bean's drama kids to do B-roll for us to help us show what these procedures would do. So we tried to anticipate all these campaigns we would need to really sell the safety of our school, that this is a place that we could still pull this off. And so as we talked about with not only just the low number of people choosing remote and the high attendance, but it did get obviously public attention. It started with an interview with Dr. McBride on WJOL. And the next thing you know, Channel Two is calling and Fox thirty-two was calling. And we could tell, like, really get a much broader audience about what we were doing. So that was just like, I think, our most important campaign of the new school year was to sell the safety of our school and to build that trust. Another big thing of this, the goal of enhanced student achievement through communication, specifically objective of meaningful campaigns that we've done with guidance. So I don't know if you've had a chance to see our support and wellness website. So this is one, the guidance office's resources was really probably one of the worst ones on our website. And it was, it broke my heart when you talked to a parent that really didn't know how to get the help they needed. And so what I love about this website, this webpage, is that our team met with the social workers several times and they told us kind of what we wanted. And I knew, as a, as a, been a parent here and Deanna Gregorich, having worked in the principal's office, like what kind of questions people need, what they need to find out. And so the way this page came about is I drew it, Deanna and I drew it on my web, on my whiteboard. Eric came over and took a picture of it on his phone. And then two days later, this is what we get. So it just shows like, this is, we wanted to make everything as easy to find as possible. So as soon as we stood this up, in just a matter of days, we had thousands of hits. And you can see, like, this is really critical information. So this website, along with some of the other things we've done, the partnering with Kids Matter, doing the parent forum and making those resources together with them. Our video that we did with not only guidance, but also with our PE to talk about the resilience program. So, I mean, obviously, that has helped a lot of people. And again, this gets picked up by Fox thirty-two with their two, just to show, again, garnering public support, but also showing that we have these resources for our parents, for our students. And then there's the regular things that we do, right? The regular campaigns. It was obviously a big challenge with our freshmen trying to get those kids enrolled and registered. So we did quite a bit of social media with this. And we also built this, Eric built this wonderful page with all these at-your-fingertips, everything a parent would need to know. And along with a really great video with Dr. Green, just to give people what they need to know. And these are things that we built out of necessity for the purposes of, you know, this virtual learning. However, obviously, these resources will continue to serve us, right? This is good for quite some time. So just to have this kind of better structure, infrastructure on our website is really very powerful. And then another one of my favorites is. And then, another one of my favorites is our goal of to expand student and staff engagement. So, we have a staff splash page, but I hope you've had a chance to see our student splash page. We're very proud of this. So, regrettably, the staff splash page doesn't look quite so fabulous. But a lot of clubs can contact us and put their flyers here, since kids aren't available, right, to go in the hallways, they don't hear the morning announcements when we're in remote. This is a way that, as they log on to their Chromebooks, this is the first thing they see. So, it has all the resources they need. We also, Eric helped Porter Press relaunch their, the student newspaper. And it also has, like, all of their apps that they would need down here, and again, some of the same social, emotional resources that they would need. So, that's another, again, an example of something that I scribbled on my whiteboard, and poof, there it was, which has really been quite wonderful. And another thing about accountability, right, accountability to our stakeholders. So, a really great thing, since we have all these new tools, is the ability to stream. So, at this moment, right, this meeting's being streamed. On Friday, when we have the Please Youth Forum for the students that couldn't physically make it here, that was being streamed. After this meeting, Dr. McBride usually does his board meeting brief, and Deanna packages that to go out in social media. And the views of those videos is much higher than those who actually log on to watch this. So, again, I think it's been this really good accountability we have, when we have all this transparency in using this, all these things that we can. And I just want to, I forgot to go over, our social media has definitely upticked. It helps a lot when you have state wins, right, like our cheer team to just boost our numbers. So, that has gone up, which has been really great to see. And another thing we talked about at our, last time I spoke with you about our branding. So, one of the latest things we did was had a committee with real stakeholders like Mike Dwyer, Roger Eber, and we put together a style guide on the principals, Dr. McBride, so that we have some uniformity on the type we use, but also our logos and the school colors. So, so that it's very accessible and uniform. All of these are available and downloadable from our website. So, again, I think that we've had a really great year. We've accomplished a little bit of everything that I really set out to do. We work very well as a team, and I'm really grateful for all the tools that we have now to do our job. And I have to say, you know, though a lot has not changed in my goals and objectives, what I really hope, in a new year, that we have an opportunity to do even more community outreach, and also to involve our students a lot more. Some of the things, just because they weren't here, just, it'll be great next year to include them more in some of the other things that we're doing. So, with that, Eric, is there anything I missed, or does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. I think you have it.
Yes, sir.
Probably coming from the least social media effective guy in the room here. You've done such a great job, because you started at zero with all your following and everything you've done. It's been fabulous. Now, a question I have, because I don't know the answer to this, if you track followers, are you able to track not who they sent, who they forwarded to? Are you able to track how many get forwarded to other people that, you know, you have people that follow us, but they share it with friends that don't follow us? Are we able to track anything like that, or no?
I, I know we can see how many shares we have. I'll have to ask one of these real smart social media.
So, the term you're looking for, I think, is engagement.
You tell me.
Yeah, so, I think, I don't know what we have, but the term would be engagement, in my eyes. And engagement is everything from somebody simply putting their eyes on it, and then the, you know, and then the likes and the retweets and the, you know, those sorts of things. Eric, what do you?
Yeah, that's about it. Other than email, perhaps, we would have the ability to see how many people forwarded on the email that we sent. But social media, you really just get that big number of everybody who saw or interacted with it. You don't really get, like, who it was sent.
No, no, that's what I'm looking for, that big number.
Yeah, we can see that.
We can see that big number.
I'd like to see where that's.
I mean, so, for example, I, we just posted Rory's accomplishment, and you could see here that it reached three hundred sixty-one people with sixty-nine engagements, and five people shared it. So, we can get numbers like that. Like, it's some of these things, like the Friday flyover, or when we got best schools from US News, that was like tens of thousands of people. So, some of those things just really explode.
Number.
Yeah. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Great job. Thank you so much. Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
Awesome.
And as Mrs. Christopher and Dr. Huntington make their way, this is reminded of the board, District Management Group, a year ago, again, this is everyone coming back a year later, the board approved using grant money to engage District Management Group to do a thorough analysis. This is a Harvard-based group of our special education services, but also what we do in general to support struggling students. And some of you, actually, at the table, have participated. You've been in a focus group with DMG.
Yeah, I didn't know that we were doing it.
And so, you know, very important that you've been active participants as well here. So, Dr. Huntington and Mrs. Christopher are just going to briefly give you the preliminary report that we have so far, and the final report will be coming at the end of the year.
Hey, sorry for the delay. I just want to say hi to all my staff that are watching, their white remote. They, I really enjoy getting all the text messages throughout the meetings, so.
Hi, guys. Okay, so, again, DMG group came in, well, they didn't officially come in, we did everything online. I believe a few of you were participants in the focus group information. We met with them to go over preliminary results. So, you want to go to the next slide, Dan Matt?
I can try.
Just scroll down.
I gotta.
All right. So, this is our timeline of activities, and as you can see, you know, we started in October with our kickoff. And as we've kind of gone through, you can see, right now, we're in March, and we've done all of that great work, and right now, we're on analyzing data. So, as we're analyzing the data, we did have this preview findings with DMG that we're going to touch base with you. And then our next steps is to share the information with our guiding coalition, as well as start developing the priorities for the district moving forward with our at-risk population. Moving on. All right, so, these are our initial areas of strength. One of the areas is that we are offering that intervention time that has been so critical to a lot of student success. That student voice has been incorporated as part of equity work and through the Equity Action Committee. Another strength was that students that were in danger of failing had wraparound services with in-school, face-to-face types of interventions, as well as that our staff are highly dedicated and really have embraced this kind of approach where we have to just kind of roll with the punches.
They also talked about some themes that they saw that they're going to go back and dig a little deeper in.
You can scroll down.
Yeah. So, the first one is about tier-one instruction. What that just means is, in our classrooms and through everything we do, how are we best servicing students? Can we get better in that realm?
Okay, so, the next thing was to really look at those interventions, and how are we managing those, and how are we making sure that we're equitable across all areas? In addition, the themes of social, emotional learning and support that came across loud and clear, kids are stressed, staff are stressed, how can we approach and work with those? And then, the supports for English language learners were also an area that we need to explore further.
So, quick question, was there anything that we shared, or you saw on the slides that we shared with you, that surprised you or excited you?
It's what you expected. I don't know, when we were going through the initial results, I was super excited to hear about that student engagement piece, and how the students are making a lot of decisions and supporting the changes that are needed to happen. So, that was one of the area that I was like, oh, that's really surprising, you know, for me, anyway. You know, another thing that I did want to point out is, we got lots of kudos from DMG Group because our schedule sharing, way that they collect data, we had a ninety-five percent participation and return rate. And they kept saying, wow, wow, and I thought, it's not a hundred. But they tell me that eighty percent is typical, what they usually get, even after haranguing. So, I, my staff has been fantastic. All the other teachers in gen ed that were polled have been really, really great about doing that. All the peer professionals had to do their schedule sharing. It was a lot of work, especially in a time where there's not a lot of time to do a lot of work. So, ninety-five percent was amazing.
Are we currently, and I guess, I, and I was one of the people in the focus group for District Management Group, and I didn't even think about the English language learners that we have in the district when I was talking with them. Do we have any specific supports that we're providing now?
You mean beyond the, like, beyond pack time or something like that? They're utilizing, like, pack time. You know, we have a very small population, and so, it is, like, how can we best utilize our resources to really support those kids? And, you know, a barrier across education, not just at Lockport, is that access test. There's only one test, one data point you can take to exit those programs, so, that's something we can work on as educators, you know?
Right. Yeah, I think that, you know, we do have classes specific to students to help them with their English language. You know, I think some of the information that we're starting to learn is, some of our students opt out of that level of support, for whatever reason, and so, we're trying to dig in and see, like, why is that happening? What supports can we maybe look at differently? And that's what we're hoping to hear from DMG.
When you're looking at, if you know.
Mentions, did they come across any that didn't seem to be working?
Well, they're right now analyzing all of the data, and that's an area that they definitely want to delve into more, and we're hoping to get more information about effectiveness or ineffectiveness.
Yeah, and one other thing, too, that's nice about the group, is that in addition to looking at how we're using it, they're, you know, they're comparing it to national best practices. So, that's something else that we'll find out when we get their final report.
So, I guess my only thought and comment here, you asked if there was any surprises here, I'm really glad to hear that our students do have a voice, much louder than, I mean, it shows here, just from all the research you guys have done. Because we hear that they have a voice, but when you actually put it down on paper, and you have the data to prove it, it says that they do. So, that's great.
Yeah, I think that's where I was at, too. I was like, I know we're doing.
Yeah, I'm rereading this, rereading this again for the third time. I'm like, oh, wait a minute, you're absolutely right. So, that's amazing, that's awesome.
Great.
Yeah, we're not surprised to be, thumbs up, you know, just surprised that. Yeah, and Angela was really excited at our meeting when that came out, she's like, that's something we didn't expect.
I'm always excited. I'm really, I'm enjoying this process, and, you know, I've had a couple of colleagues say, why would you put yourself through this? Why would you decide that you wanted to do this? And it's been for my own personal, professional development, and the things that I've been learning and hearing about nationally, I'm hoping to bring those really great things and continue, I think, providing one of the best special education programs in Illinois.
Yeah, I would say our consultants are fabulous and very thorough.
Awesome.
Has there been anything that's been specific to the pandemic?
Well, they had to, they're looking at things and asking a lot of questions of people, like, how would this be different if we weren't in a pandemic? And I think we're kind of getting some really different information, because people have had to make some adjustments and changing, and they're saying things like, boy, having this intervention time built into our day has really been effective. It's something like, could we maybe consider doing as part of our school year? And so, the information that's coming from it is, yes, the stress, the social aspects of COVID are certainly impacting, you know, not necessarily learning, but impacting our students. And, but there are some good things that they're learning from COVID, too, and we're hoping to get that data as well.
Yeah, I mean, the teachers commented, you know, just, this was one of their points under something that was successful, that a lot of our intervention spaces used to be outside of the school day, so kids couldn't access them. And by having them inside the school day, where kids can access them, many of the staff in the focus group commented on it, and that that was beneficial.
Right, when it's part of the school day, they can't run from you.
So, with that being said, it's such, you know, we did a pendulum swing from normalcy to what I call disaster recovery, is what we're doing right now, right? So, listening to both of you and seeing that this intervention time, and I'm probably challenging Dr. McBride here, is, do you think maybe we should do intervention time when we go back to normalcy for our school day? I mean, who says that we have to continue to do school the way we normally thought it was? So, I challenge you guys to think about that.
Well, and I think that we're expecting to hear, you know, some of that information from this study. This is a third-party outsider, you know? Sometimes we have our own ideas about what works and what needs work.
Right.
But to have an outside third party that is really looking at everything, I'm hoping will help give us some guidance and direction about what would be in the best interest of students here in Lockport.
Yeah. Good.
We love hearing your support for that idea.
Excited, yeah, excited for you guys, yeah.
Anything else? No?
Thank you.
We'll be back again.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll be back again with the final report.
That's right, absolutely.
And this gives you an idea, something I know that's really important to the board, is how do we assist struggling students?
Yep.
You know, and this really, you raised that question early in my tenure, trying to get a sense of are interventions effective, and bringing in a national sounding board, really to look at that, is really what this is about.
Thank you. Yeah, what, you're not coming? I'm just kidding. Your name's on it, too. No, I know. Okay, I do not have any flashy PowerPoint, so, sorry.
You just have Mrs. Kroy.
I have numbers and.
Right, Mrs. Kroy just has four hundred hours behind her. So, as Mrs. Kroy comes up, board members know that we've had a year-long process of converting from digital schools to Infinite Visions. And, again, something you heard about at about this time last year, when we learned that digital schools would be leaving Illinois, and we had to adapt and adjust, and so, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kroy. But first, thank her, Mr. Kangari, this document, there's really no way, their entire staff to, what I have seen in the past year is, I think, more than four hundred hours of just constant changeover. And the amount of work that Stephanie's led, Tony's led, an incredible process, because really, we took the whole engine out of what we do. And as everybody here would agree, getting paid on Friday, every other Friday, is relatively important for people's lives, or managing benefits, or HR records, or licensing, all very important, and we couldn't operate without a district. So, Mrs. Kroy, excellent job.
So, just, I want to, I just want to highlight a few things, and then ask the board if they have any questions for me, okay? Like Dr. McBride said, it was actually a year ago, at the March board meeting, that the board approved our agreement with Tyler Technology to switch to their Infinite Vision software, which is now our new personnel and finance software. So, you know, next to the student information system, it's the second-largest, really, database, financial, or like.
financial, or like piece of software that we use on a daily basis, right? And like the student software, Infinite Campus, there's so many people that touch it. Okay, it started out with just my office and Tony's office, right? So our core team is, consists of, you know, Mr. Kengari and myself, as well as all of our staff. We included everyone in the process, which in the long run helped all of us. I mean, I guess I couldn't have had that. Anyone who knows me knows I'm a little bit controlling as far as this kind of stuff goes. And it was tough for me, honestly, to let some of these pieces go to everyone else because you want, something like this has to go correct, has to go right, you know? But Tony and I trusted our team. And so Michelle, Frankie, Dana, Carrie, Melissa, Lisa, Susan, Linda, all of them had a piece in the implementation as far as configuring data, keying in data, checking data, verifying that everyone's direct deposits will go through correctly. So every single one of those people played key roles on here. And once Tony and I were able to let go of some of that and let them do their, do their part, it was, it was actually very successful. So like Dr. McBride said, there were over 400 hours. The 400 hour figure actually only counts the hours we spent with the actual trainer, okay? So obviously there were more hours than that. Those are the hours that we were working with the trainer. So we had homework outside of that, you know? The other important pieces, I guess I just want to make sure I point out is, you know, all the other people involved and the success of it. So we also had key people in each of the other buildings that took on some responsibility of making sure things like subs get paid correctly. So we have Christine at East Campus and we have Dawn at Central Campus. They were key people because they helped us make sure people got paid. So in the whole transition of things, there were levels of things that needed to go right. The very first and most important one was making sure our 500 people got paid, right? So in that transition, the fact that only one person had an issue, which was immediately remedied, was, to me, the biggest success of the whole thing. Because the rest of it can be, can be dealt with, right? Though, I mean, those are really the biggest highlights I would like to cover. I don't know if the board has any questions about anything else, because I really think that the people, there were a couple of other people I didn't actually mention, but Janice in special education, Sylvia Peets, Wendy Scoopin in special education, they also helped with payroll. And all those people were, like I said, they were, they were key to making sure that things went smoothly. But does the board have any specific questions about any of the other pieces? Because now we're starting to use that software on a daily basis more and more. Tony's office is getting all the personnel records slowly scanned in, so we'll move away from paper records. My office will do the same thing, but we're kind of, we're easing into it because we already have half a year paper records, so it doesn't make sense to start full. We're going to finish out a paper record year and then start more paperless next year, but
So what are you going to do with the paper records?
Get them all scanned?
Well, eventually they'll get destroyed. But we do have to follow the Records Destruction Act. So eventually they will get destroyed based on the, you know, required amount of time you have to keep each record. There are some records that have to be kept for a very long time. I believe that we can keep them in electronic format, however. So then eventually the paper would get shredded and we would only keep the electronic records.
So how often is the system backed up?
They have, it's, we, this is, we house, we do not house this data. It is, part of our agreement with them is for them to house it, it's backed up daily.
Okay, and they have a redundant system, so you won't be there?
Yep.
Now, the employees don't do direct deposit?
In total?
Yeah.
Handful, it's 10 or less.
And did the changes in these procedures impact how the checks are issued to those employees?
No, we still, we still do the same thing, we still issue their paper checks. Being a public body, we have to, we can't force them to do direct deposit.
No, 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 that's fine, I just, but there was no impact?
There was no impact to them at all, no. Now, we printed the checks and they still come pick them up.
And they still come, okay.
Yep, yep. Through this pandemic, we actually had a few people switch to direct deposit that were holdouts. So, so now we have less than we used to. Because through the pandemic, they didn't want to have to come get their checks when they're not physically in the same space, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
But there was a plus?
There was a plus, there was a plus. You know, all employees, even whether they get their paper check or whether they get a direct deposit, can log into our new portal through this software, which is much more robust than our old one was. They can see a lot more information, they can request changes to their information, including submitting a direct deposit request.
Were they able to access their 2020 W2s?
Not 2020, because those had to be produced from our old system.
Okay.
So we were not able to get those in here.
That's a good point, this system became effective, so.
But 2021, yes.
Next, 2022, they'll be able to act, go online and access the W2s.
Yes, we will be able to ask them if they want to receive it electronically.
That's right, this didn't stop until 2021, so it'd be hard.
Yep, it was a clean break for calendar year stuff like that.
Sure, absolutely, totally get that.
Yep. Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I know how hard this was on you guys, because I've gone through accounting software as well this past year. And both of you guys have got a great product here, just listening to us and talking about it. So, thank you for doing all your hard work, because people don't understand how difficult it is to do a conversion. And when I read 100 years, I'm like, wow, that's a lot. And so you answered Luanne's question about retention schedules and things like that. And one of the things I think we probably already have checked into is insurance on cybersecurity, things like that, making sure that our vendor is insured as well, and grabbing those documents too. So you guys have done a great job. And Tony, you're going to have a fantastic system to work with and get rid of all that paper as well, so.
That'd be helpful.
Thank you very much.
Help in the office, there are
I'm sure it is, yeah.
With the Illinois Retention Records Clause, why are you keeping the personnel record so long?
It, this depends on the type of record, right? We do have a shredding policy based on each type of record. Like in my office, a lot of things are seven years, right?
Right.
With the exception of some payroll and personnel records. Some of those have to be kept 60 years past their last day of employment or something. So they have to be kept for a long, long, long time. So we aren't keeping them beyond what we're required to keep them.
Right.
But we do have seven years worth of records around, so.
No, I was thinking, you know, if you went, if you went to whatever the, if it's 60, 70 years, you know, the extra 30 that you keep, why are you taking the exercise to scan them?
No, they're not, we are going backwards, so we may not ever get to scanning those. You're correct. Tony's office is starting with current active employees.
Absolutely, that's right.
And we'll be working backward a little bit.
Yeah, because I misunderstood the comment, because it says, we're converting 100 years of personnel. Like, well, why are we doing all that?
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Good.
No, it's starting, starting, you know, with the current active employees.
Absol, okay, that makes sense.
Kudos to you guys, Karen.
Yeah, great job, outstanding, really excellent.
We had a large team.
Tony, were we in the auditorium the first time you brought this up?
Yes.
The first reading was, we were, in February, auditorium. Thanks so much, Stephanie, great job.
Thank you.
That was a long time ago.
Next, we have the maintenance
The maintenance report. Part of the maintenance report is where we are right now. Much to the consternation of Mr. Bill Thompson. Some of the panels that you are directly looking at right now are warping. And the dilemma there is always with a vendor, you know, and being able to replace those and being able to ascertain why is that and how that can get fixed. So Fry Riglet, who installed these, is, is working on getting us an answer for a solution. If you're reading between the lines, I believe there's some frustration there. And we hope we can get back to the board, because obviously the design of this space is really unique and really special. A large consideration that is included in the maintenance report is the East Campus 900-ton chiller. And it is as big as that sounds. And it's coming up on its 25th anniversary. And, you know, in the maintenance report, very important, obviously that's a critical piece of HVAC here at East Campus and also in the pandemic, as we look at ventilation mitigation and even just imagining what Mr. Thompson included in his report. What if that chiller unexpectedly went out? It is not an overnight changeover. Usually when these chillers are replaced, they either require a Sikorsky helicopter typically to bring it over, or, you know, one of those huge skyscraper-sized cranes. Just getting that equipment in place is a major undertaking. So we're looking very carefully at that, also at any savings. If we are able to replace that scheduled 2023, with the considerations, maybe thinking sooner. There are some savings, close to a half million dollars we might be able to incur through a program of com medicine. Also, because it's related to ventilation systems, this could fall under our ESSER grant, which is our, basically the education version of the CARES grant. So just making the board aware that that is, that is ongoing right now. Yeah, please do.
In CARES.
Yeah, yeah, and just, just for the board members and folks who might be watching, ESSER is the education version of that, that nomenclature. Media Center project is, is moving right along. We've really kind of gotten down to furniture and finishings, looked at that. A number of different things ready, ready to go. One of the things that I'm most excited about is, many things to be ready in the fall. We're looking at an August 27 completion date, that project just a little bit after our start time. But what that would provide for our students in terms of opening up that space and technology. But something I think is very important is what DLA has done with the idea of opening up a small coffee cafe where our CCC students would have an employment vocational opportunity, employment simulation opportunity, to get those kind of vocational skills. They've done a very nice job at finding and converting a space for that purpose, so really amazing. Information sign, the information sign that you see, the marquee sign out here, has, has lived its life. We had a viewing the other day, so we'll be replacing that with a high-resolution marquee sign. And three companies responded to our request for proposals. And then asbestos abatement, that goes along with the MIS here at East. We do have some asbestos we'll have to remove, and all of that is in order, very standard process. And we're able to do that in the summer without shutting the whole building down.
You said you're placing a sign with a 10, M, whatever.
Right, the electronic sign that's right out here.
And you have a 19 out there now, so is it the resolution or technology that makes it better?
It's a little bit of both. The high-definition resolution is so much stronger, and it's also the age. You might notice if you drive by, there's a little square that's out, and given its vintage and its age. Bill, I'm trying to remember when that was placed in, you told me, originally that electronic sign.
2006, I believe.
Right, so it's, it's at about its obsolescence point. The difference in resolution, as you can all imagine, just look at your cell phones, is striking in terms of what, what a sign like that can provide now.
How, what is the cost of the new sign?
The high-resolution bill, wasn't it 27,000?
Yeah, around 27,000.
The, the original sign placement that was paid by Walmart, when Walmart came in here. Anyone think of having Kate Dean give Walmart a call and see if they want to contribute to, you know, upgrading their, their previous sign?
We could, we'd have to look at that agreement. Oftentimes, if it came in with the Walmart, there are sometimes, at times, almost like impact fees, one-time donations, like that. Oftentimes those are one-time, not sort of in perpetuity. But that always to have some kind of corporate partnering always can be something we can ask.
I mean, the management team is totally different now, so.
Right, right. That is the maintenance report.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right, next we have the capital project expenditure and inter-fund transfer summaries that you can see there.
And these are all of our, our, our transfer funds, you know, just wrapping up the A field and payment there. You know, the central, we were anticipating a half million dollars. It looks like more, like 300,000 for that masonry repair. And then to really get the ball rolling in the technology in the MIS in East Campus. I'm sorry, what?
Can I back up a minute?
Of course you can.
The chiller thing you were talking about?
Right, yeah, the 900-ton chiller.
Is there a such thing over at Central?
There is.
What's the age of it?
There, there's HVAC over there, but that's an entirely different system because the building is not, the chiller really is, you know, for Central here. So, you know, the system over there, Bill, do you want to kind of
Yeah, so, you know, we have one large central system here. Over at Central, there's a series of smaller rooftop units, DX units, window air conditioners. So it's a whole bunch of units over there. Here, we have one unit, that if this unit goes down, the whole building goes down. So that's, that's the trick with that.
And that's not an unusual feature, a single chiller, single chiller tower is a pretty standard in a building this size feature for efficiency.
I just wondered about, when they were over there, what's the age over there?
Right, a little bit different because it's modular. It's not one, those have been replaced out over time, it's not one, you know. And a 900 chiller, 900-ton chiller is about a million dollars in cost.
I thought it was. Okay, thank you.
All right, those, those are the reports.
All right, thank you. All right, I just need a motion to enter into closed session.
I'll make that move.
To confidentially discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against employees of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity under ILCS 120/2C1 and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees under chapter 500 of the ILCS 120/2C2 and litigation when in action against affecting or, or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed pending for a court or administrative tribunal or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting under chapter 5 of the ILCS 120/2C11. And I believe Mr. Lewandowski made that motion. It's been seconded by Dr. Shaw, roll call.
Can we get a timer?
Yes, we will, as soon as we take off, as soon as we take a roll call. Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Eis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Lopez, Camila? Yes. So our timer, our session ended at 9:04, and what we'll do is we'll have a five-minute break.
All right. All right.